All right, well, seeing that at six o'clock, let's go ahead and start this. I'll go ahead and call our Urban Renewal Board meeting to order. Jeff, can you call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Pete Sold.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Hamblin.
Present.
Councilor Lee.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Here.
Chief Schneider. Appears to not be here yet.
Not here.
Executive Director Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Polian.
Here. All right, so this is our Urban Renewal Board meeting. We only have one item on the agenda tonight, which is the kind of the expansion of our facade improvement program. It was something that I brought up during our council reports at our last meeting as an idea, and I just would like to thank our staff, primarily Kelly O'Neil and David Snyder, for all the hard work that you've put into the development of this program and working with our business owners and kind of a lot of back and forth. Everybody has seen the report in front of you. I'll turn to staff to kind of give an explanation. But the thought process behind this is, is it's an extension basically of our facade program in place. It's an 80/20 program, so that both sides have a little bit of stake in the game, both the business owner as well as the city of Sandy. Primarily our urban, well, this is obviously our urban renewal account, our urban renewal board meeting on this. The idea with the 20% is that businesses are struggling right now, and 20% could be very hard for these businesses to do even today. So I'm open for discussions of other fine, increased financing if council wants to go there, but I do want to point out that the 20% for the business owner is put together in installment program. That will be interest-free because it's not a loan. It's just a payment-back installment program to the city that will take over, place over a course of time to allow for repayment, and they can negotiate to kind of start payments by understanding when they, when they can, because obviously a lot are hurting right now. But the idea behind this is to help out our local business owners with the current restrictions from the governor for outdoor seating, to also provide a long-term benefit with some of the direction that our council has made the point to this point with getting rid of SDCs for patio seating and encouraging that kind of environment. This could provide a good addition or community for the shoulder months for the outdoor seating as well. One hope that I have with the recent momentum in Congress, you may remember, we paid our first business relief program out of our urban renewal fund, and then we were able to fully reimburse the fund out of Care Act dollars. This potentially, not saying it is, but potentially we could do something like that with this. With that, Jordan or David, I'll turn it over to one of you guys. Thank you again for all the work staff put in.
Yeah, great introduction, Mayor. I'll just turn it over to Dave Snyder, who can go into the specifics about the program, but yeah, they did a great, great job in a short amount of time pulling this together with input from, from the mayor and community members. I think it's a pretty innovative way to, you know, have the benefit of addressing, you know, the restrictions around COVID, but also looking at making permanent improvements for outdoor dining within our community, which I think, you know, we've had conversations about and would be great. I think it's a community that enjoys the sort of patio atmosphere for a meal or a beer or what have you, so I think this will provide some lasting benefits to our downtown and commercial business owners that can really expand their, their seating and options outside. So Dave, take it away.
All right. So outdoor seating in, for Sandy restaurants is something that we've desired here in the community for quite a while, but this current pandemic obviously is providing a huge amount of impetus to the concept. Proposed program before you tonight is a response to ongoing conversation, as Mayor Polian indicated earlier, between mayor and local restaurant, gym and bar owners to search for ways to assist the local business community with outdoor seating options. This proposed grant program is envisioned as a subsection of the facade program and would retain the basic structure of that program. Funding would be provided through this grant program to assist business owners with the design and construction of permanently covered structures for the purpose of increasing outdoor drinking and dining in the community. These structures would require professional design and engineering and would incorporate Sandy-style elements into the design as required by the municipal code, and projects would be required to follow state contracting guidelines, minimum of three bids. Lowest bidder gets the contract, CCB licensed contractors, those sorts of things. However, there are three primary differences between this proposed subsection of the facade program and the larger program. First, this program would only be for those permanent outdoor covered structures and their associated amenities, so only things listed in the guidelines. Second, we would offer the applicant an option of soliciting their own professional design and engineering as part of the overall project cost, or using a city-generated design at no cost. The reason we put that in there is because the city-generated design would be much cheaper and faster to obtain, as staff could modify design work for structures already completed, like the one that's shown in the staff report tonight. These designs would also guarantee strict adherence to Sandy style. The most, but the most important element of this program is funding structure. Rather than ask our local businesses to pay for all the design, engineering and construction costs upfront, as is standard with the facade program, we propose that the city pay for all these costs upfront and have the applicant reimburse the city for their portion upon project completion. Applicants that own their own property may secure their responsibility, their financial responsibility through the project contract via a lien. Applicants that don't own their property may have their property owners secure their responsibility by assuming a lien on the applicant's behalf. And the idea there is that the structure would end up being a permanent part of the property owner's property, so. We further propose that the city's financial responsibility for these projects be set at 80% across the board, as the mayor indicated, up to $100,000 worth of project cost. This is equal to the reimbursement rate of the first tier of the facade program, which is the first 5,000. We would just extend that all the way through the full project cost. Finally, we propose that the applicant have the option to reimburse the city for their portion of project costs in one of two ways. Either in a lump sum within 30 days of completion of the program, or, or actually, I should say, within 30 days of final inspection, or through a no-interest payment plan with the city as determined by the city's finance director. The most important reason for the proposed funding differences lie with the current and probable future state of the economy as we battle this pandemic. Small businesses, drinking and dining establishments, and gyms particularly, are having an incredibly difficult time getting lending institutions to lend them money right now. And this could persist well into the recovery period. By providing the funding to complete these projects upfront, we can ensure that the projects will be completed as quickly as possible, with an eye toward helping some of our eligible businesses increase their occupancy levels and hopefully remain in business throughout the pandemic. Items covered on this program are listed in the staff report. Happy to answer any questions about those items if you have any. Applicants would also have the option of either managing the project themselves or having city staff, i.e. me, manage the project for them. Staff management would be quicker for the reasons listed in the staff report, but it's ultimately up to the applicant. We're, we're fine with that either way, and we've used both methods with the facade program, depending on the applicant with good results, so. And regarding the $100,000 limit, I just wanted to put in a brief comment that staff believes it's unlikely that we'll ever reach this threshold. The larger, the, the structure that was shown in the staff report, which is at Bornstedt Park, is one of the structures we had built out there. The larger structure ended up costing the city $34,000. The smaller one was around 26. At least for the first applicant, and I think I know who the first applicant for this program is going to be. There, the structure size that they would be looking at would be roughly the size of the larger structure out there. It would just have a different, have roughly the same square footage, just a little different configuration. But ultimately, the reason we set the limit at 100,000 is in order to get potential applicants to think big. The bigger, the better. And then with funding, the only real issue with funding would be how to fund a project for a business outside of the Urban Renewal District. There's only three existing businesses that I've been able to identify that would fit this category, but one of them may apply. I've talked to the owners of the Smokey Hearth, and they are very, very interested in this program, so. The town improvement program solved this problem by setting aside some general fund money in the economic development budget for a potential project to be replenished as needed. Just as a side note, we haven't had any reason to touch that yet. The same could be done here. And at Mayor's request, the staff will also request, research the possibility of using federal and/or state COVID relief fund programs to provide applicant loan forgiveness if this is possible. I guess I'll turn it over to the Development Services Director if he has anything else to add to this.
How much? You know, I just wanted to thank Mayor Polian for bringing this up on the seventh. I think it was something that was needed, and I think with the mayor pushing us on it, which is good, it got us to really act quick on it, because I think the local business community demands that. I also want to thank David for going out there right away and talking to different businesses around the community, and to Rebecca Casey also in our office, who's been working with all the local businesses that have been setting up the temporary tents around town and been working with the fire marshal to make sure that they're safe for occupants, so. I just mainly wanted to reiterate that I'm very thankful that we have a good team and that everybody's putting in their work and working quickly to solve issues that are facing these businesses in a time of ever-changing goalposts from the governor, so. I just wanted to thank everybody and appreciate all your hard work, David.
Yeah, no problem, and I second that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Oh, thank, thank you, guys. It just, it really just lit a fire under me when I was out talking to business owners and they had told me how they just recently had conversations with Kelly and David and our team and, and just how grateful all of them are for the work that you guys are out doing it. So this really is an example of what we can do as a community when we put our minds to it. I mean, just imagine sitting out under one of these covers out front of Smokey Hearth on a nice spring or summer day, having a cold beverage. Pretty awesome, right? Questions and comments from council? I see Counselor Schultz, and then Pete Sold, and then Lee.
Yeah, I love this idea. I love the project, and I like that we're going for a more permanent plan. I think that's really smart moving forward. My main question is regards to the businesses that don't necessarily have room for one of the larger standalone structures. Is there going to be opportunity for them to apply for funds to spruce up what little patio they may have? I'm thinking of ones right on 26 there that just don't have extra space, but can they still apply to, I don't know, add a roof to their teeny tiny patio or something like that? What's the?
Yeah, I, I don't see that there's any size limitations on this, even if the structure is very, very small. I think we'd be more than happy to cover it, and in some cases, I think we almost kind of like to see that more. But we would also be interested in, or we'd be comfortable with covering if somebody just wanted to get heaters, electric heaters through this program, or one element like the vinyl paneling for space they may already have set up, yeah, we'd be more than happy to accommodate that.
And if I can, if I can jump in really fast, if you're talking about putting covered seating out into the right-of-way of Procter, we have to work with ODOT since they own the right-of-way. If it's Pioneer, the city of Sandy owns the right-of-way, so there's really no restriction there. And then if it's a property at a corner, what I would prefer to do, and we've already started talking to at least one business about this, is that we would actually most likely help them put the covered seating on the, on the side street, which is a local street. There's the potential even to temporarily or permanently block off or shut down a parking space or two, so that that could accommodate the walkway, the walking surface, and by the building where the sidewalk currently is could accommodate the seating. So we're, as Mayor Polian said, I think we're thinking outside the box here and we're trying to go big, so there's a few locations that I think you'll probably be seeing proposals in 2021, where I'm looking to change the right-of-way configuration to accommodate outdoor seating.
Great. And then like a quick follow-up to that is, how long do you anticipate when someone applies to when they can expect to see their structure being built? What's the, what's the general timeline for that sort of thing?
Well, there will be, it, part of it would depend on whether they're generating their own design work or they're using ours. If they use a design that's generated by the city, that would go a lot more quickly. But I'm thinking, you know, a week or two for design and engineering, maybe a couple of weeks to go out, then a couple of weeks to put together a scope of work and go out for bid, and maybe, I don't know, Kelly, what do you think, two to three weeks for construction? So we're thinking maybe two months?
We got to do whatever we can to speed up that timeline, you guys. And I mean, so we've got to, we've got to really push these guys towards our design, you know, so that we can immediately and really have a good feel for vendors that we're going to for, for a quick, you know, turnaround quote. Sorry to jump in front, Bethany, I just, I really want to stress the importance of moving as fastly as possible to our staff.
Yeah, so that, I think it is incentivized to use our design because it's free to them. If they decide to use their own design, they have to pay 20% of the engineering costs. So I think that will push a lot of people to using their own design. The, the other thing to keep in mind is that while we have to follow public bidding processes because there's public funds, the RFP decision, we only had to solicit three bids. We don't have to get three bids back. So we send those out and we ask for bids back in a week or 10 days. If only one bidder, if we send them out to at least three people, that's soliciting three bids, so we don't have to necessarily wait for three bids to be returned each time.
In addition to that, just as an additional piece of information, the gentleman that, or the company that built the structures down at Bornstedt Park will definitely be interested in bidding on all of these, so there's one bidder for you. And the pilot project that I'm envisioning with Rhea Brower, she, her husband is a licensed contractor that is interested in bidding on this too. So there's two bidders just like that.
Yeah, and we've already checked into that in the past, and just because you're, that you are related to the person that you're doing it from, that doesn't have anything to do with bidding processes. It's still legal.
Yeah, so long as he's a license, has a CCB license that's active and in good standing, and he does, so.
Looks like we had Counselor Pete Sold and then Lee.
Yeah, great questions, Bethany. She asked pretty much all my questions. And so, hey, it's awesome. But I just want to say thank you. This is great. This is great stuff, and I do look forward to, even outside of COVID, of having changed the dynamics of our town in, you know, making lemonade out of some horrible lemons here, you know, like what Bend, you see when you go to Bend, Redmond. Now granted, they have a little drier weather, but you know, this will be a great amenity to our town, you know, in the looks like we've got over at Bornstedt throughout our town, done with our design. Will really change that, and as well as getting more of our businesses to be able to function in our, in our commercial zones there. And we'll figure out outside of our commercial zones for that, as they, you know, they can't use urban renewal, but we'll find those other avenues as well. But thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lee?
I think that's a good project. I think my question follows a lot after Bethany's. I was wondering about setbacks and what our constraints are, but it sounds like staff is willing to go outside of those constraints to make it possible.
Yeah, we don't have to go too far outside because in the downtown, there's a zero setback requirement, so they can go right up to the property line as long as it's built for fire-rated construction. And when you put a metal roof on the suckers, it's pretty easy to do a fire-rated construction, so that takes care of that. As Counselor Smallwood could probably testify to, and Chief Schneider. The other thing too is that because of the recent parking code changes that the council adopted in May, we don't have to worry in the downtown specifically about them doing parking calculations. If you didn't, if you had not adopted those in May, a lot of these businesses like Rhea's, for example, would have to be going through a variance procedure through the planning commission to get her outdoor seating approved, so those parking code changes were huge, by the way.
Yeah, thank you for that, and thank you. That, those parking code changes came from a recommendation from staff. greatly appreciate that. Counselor Exner?
Yeah, I'm really excited about what I've seen here. I think this is great news. I think it's really good for the city of Sandy, and pretty much should be great news for our restaurants. A couple of questions. One is, I know we're directing them towards the restaurant side of the world, but is there any reason why we wouldn't be looking at, so let's say, the, the food carts? And then how about, I know of at least one tent, I guess I call it a tent. It's a metal pole shelter in downtown part of Sandy. Would there be somebody else besides a food business that could be able to take advantage of this?
Yeah, gyms actually are called out specifically in, in this proposal, because one of our local businesses had mentioned to us that it would be very advantageous to them if they had a place outdoors where people could workout, so that would be one. But, and it wouldn't be just limited to restaurants. It would be any food and dining, or food and beverage-based business, so say, for example, Mountain Mocha could certainly apply for this to put a permanent cover over their deck. And in fact, I would love to talk to their owner about that.
I think the intention is that anybody that applies would likely be at the grant. We would review those obviously and make sure that they're legal and conforming, but I don't, I don't think the, at least from my opinion, is the proposal was not to restrict anybody from really applying for one, a business, I should say.
So what are we talking about here? You're thinking 30 some odd grand. That's, sounds like that's the ballpark for one of these fellows. If you put 10 of them up, that's 300 grand. What are we thinking about for money and a tap to our urban renewal dollars account?
Can I speak to that, David? I just looked at the budget today, actually. So we have about $280,000 to $300,000 in facade grant money that was already budgeted for this biennium that has not been touched. So if you did have 10 of them at, let's say, $40,000 apiece, and the applicant has to pay $8,000 each, so that's $32,000 times 10, I think that would be getting pretty close. So if we get, if we get close, I think to what's been budgeted, we'd have to come back and speak to the Urban Renewal Agency and determine, or speak to Tyler and Jordan to determine if there's more funding that can be set aside for these.
I would just offer, imagine a future where there's 10 of these throughout our city.
No kidding, right?
Pretty cool.
The last little thing is, is do we have anything that's competitive for, you said that those dollars were not being planned to use at all in this next fiscal year or, or ever? So there's no competition? There's no other possibility of being scratched out?
I mean, there's, there's, there's always a possibility. I mean, David's working with, I think, at least is it two or three property owners, David, on facade grants still? We got Allen Portman's church, the Mountain Mocha building.
Those are the two.
Definitely some money. When I said 280 to 300,000, there's definitely some money that's still dedicated to ongoing facade projects. So I don't know the exact dollar amount, but off the top of my head, but yeah, I mean, there's, if, say we got 10 of these plus other facade and public infrastructure grant requests all at the same time, we would definitely have to either determine who gets the grant awards, or we'd have to come back to you to make sure you're good with spending more money than what's allocated in the budget.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from council? Oh, well, I'm sorry, from the Urban Renewal Board? All right, is there a motion?
Prickets, anyone? I don't have it in front of me, but I'd like to make a motion that that we move forward with the, with the project and granting the urban renewal grants for the structure improvements for local businesses.
There's a motion from Counselor Smallwood, and I'm going to give it to Executive Director Jones this time. I don't know if I've gotten a second. All those in favor, please signify by giving me an eye or a thumbs up. Eye. And a nay or a thumbs down. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. This is our last Urban Renewal Board for this biennium. Thank you to Executive Director Jones and Fire Chief Snyder for all of your input and participation on this board. We've had, we've accomplished a lot these last two years, and just really thankful for you. So thank you very much. With that, I will call this meeting to a conclusion. And we will, I guess we'll have to recess for five minutes, and we will start our work session at 6:30. Thank you, everybody. All right, I'm seeing just about everybody back at 6:30, so I'll go ahead and call this work session to order. Per normal, we'll go through a quick review of this evening's agenda, and I will pause for any questions that council may have for staff to help us get better prepared, or, or comments that you may have on the agenda. Tonight, we'll be jumping pretty much straight into public comment and then to our consent agenda. Is there any question on the consent agenda? We have last week's council meeting minutes, and we have a transit advisory board term establishment with a new member appointment. Are there any questions on that? Okay, then under resolutions, we have our public hearing for our master fee schedule update. Was there any questions for staff before we go into that tonight?
Are we going to separate the sewer charge from the other charges for discussion purposes?
I think that, I think we can tackle that when we get to that this evening, Jan, but I have, I have heard that there might be there may be some counselors that want to look at doing that, and I'm sure we can have a discussion. And then public hearing, after that, we'll have a public hearing resolution for modified construction manager, general contractor, project delivery method. Is there any questions on that? And then we'll do our city manager report, committee and council reports, and then something about some council recognition or something I don't know much about. And then you'll have to stick around for, you know, I mean, it would not be this council if we didn't have a long meeting and have an executive session afterwards, so. We have that afterwards, so stick around for that. And with that, this is our work session, and I'm going to go ahead and, I guess, I'll start with you, Jordan, but really, Counselor Lee has worked tremendously hard on a resiliency action plan that I look forward to hearing more about tonight. I know that she is somebody that's really served as a colleague for ours for the last several years that we've come to really respect, especially in this area of expertise. And thank you for all of your work that you've put into this tonight, Counselor Lee, and I know that we all look forward to hearing from you.
Yeah, Counselor Lee, somebody needs no introduction. I think she's done a fantastic job. I think I joked earlier in this process that you know, Jan should have been paid for this work as a consultant, really just a great job working with staff to pull together, I think, what is a fantastic plan. They did a lot of research at what other cities have done. You know, the, the working with, the opportunity to work with the county and be a part of a cohort of other cities and expanding this plan is another great idea. And if you had a chance to actually look through the plan, just, just a lot of great actions and ideas that I think Jan will go and summarize and then talk about the next steps, but I think really tees it up for us as staff to work on the next phase, which is implementation and schedule and, and how we start integrating this work into our, our operations. So I'll turn it over to Jan. I just wanted to thank her for her work.
I apologize. And Mayor, you, you had asked me to invite the councilors-elect to this discussion, and I forgot to mention that. They are in attendance tonight. If you'd like me to go ahead and promote them to panelists.
I'd hate to catch any of them off guard, so I just want to say ahead of time, if you end up not wanting to come over as a panelist, no one should judge you for that, as they, we're not aware of this. But I would like all councilors-elect to know that they are welcome to join us in this conversation.
And I did give them a heads up as well. It's
Oh, you did?
I just didn't remind them today, so I'm assuming that.
Sounds good.
Counselor Lee, she's all yours. Thank you.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank all of the members of the committee, and you saw on the staff report who those folks were. Emily from Development worked closely with me, and we had help from several other departments and from Renee Gregg that some of you had met when she testified earlier. She's a teacher at Oregon Trail School District. So we worked for several months on putting this together, and we are bringing it to the council tonight so that you can decide if you want to accept this plan or turn it back to the committee for some additional work before you accept it. But then beyond that, we'd like to talk about some of the next steps that could occur. We have been working with the Geo Institute out of Ashland, which is part of a national organization. They're working on climate action plans with cities around the country, and here in Oregon, GOS is working with six cities. Emily and myself have attended those cohort meetings, and we've talked for the last couple of months about how to expand the committee from internal within a city to a broader citywide aspect. So that's a step that could be taken in the future as well. The other step that could be taken is putting together a citywide task force. So this plan would then not just cover the city's internal workings and conservation efforts, but it could also include school district businesses, other people, incorporate their ideas, and develop a climate And develop a climate action plan or resilience plan of some sort for the city as a whole. Um, the other part of this is that. Clackamas County is actually preparing a climate action plan that will cover the whole county. And what they're looking at is having the cities integrate within their plan. And the reason that was important to us when we talked about putting this plan together. Is at that time, there was a cap and trade bill, and that cap and trade bill emphasized that ODOT funding, for example, would be prioritized. Based on cities having climate action plans. So there are some other things going on out there now. I think that we're still. Kind of in that box where if we don't do something, we could have a detriment in the future on funding. So I'd really like to see the city attempt to um, do something to avoid that. But surely to go into the county's working plan. And that plan for the county is underway now. They're actually looking for volunteers by January eleventh to work on their committee. And they are going to have a report done in January of twenty twenty-two, um, according to the consultant that they've hired. Oops, there goes the electricity blinking. Um, the other thing that's going on is that D E Q has started a process called. Cap and Reduce instead of Cap and Trade. The governor wrote an executive order last, well, I guess was actually earlier this year. You know, twenty oh four, which requires state agencies, sixteen of them to look at. Greenhouse gas reductions in their agency, and what kind of things that they could do. Um, for those reductions under the current law, under the current authorities those agencies have. So that uh, task force starts meeting in January and they'll meet through the summer. And hopefully there will be a rulemaking by the end of twenty twenty-one, so we all know where we're going. Um, they're meeting once a month for a whole day. Um, I know about that because I'm on the task force. So it will be a big job to accomplish. Um, I don't know what outcome there will be for cities in these rules. But I certainly would be happy to keep in touch with uh, staff or someone on the council. As we move forward so that you're aware of what's going on. Um, one of the outputs that we had in the plan. Looked at the actual amount of greenhouse gases that could be saved. And we had actual numbers from a study that the county actually uh, put together with the consultant. So that's where those numbers come from, and they're pretty representative of what's happening in Clackamas County, maybe not as much in Sandy. But it gave us some guidelines to work with. And then we had all of the various departments who were part of the committee list out what they were doing in their departments. Also to put on their thinking caps about what could be done um, for more conservation. So you'll see a couple tables in the report that go through some of those potential activities. Um, our report doesn't set a specific goal or timeline. We thought that would be a piece of work that the council might want to. Deal with itself. Um, so unless you have any questions, that's kind of a overview.
Thank you, Counselor Lee. This was very well put together, and thank you for all of your work on this. I know uh. Uh, one of the things specifically like with the climate action plan that Counselor Lee referred to, um, being talked about in the middle of the cap and trade debate in the, in the legislature. Is that, you know, this really is a direction, uh, you know, whether we are for or against, you know, an overall direction happening at the state. You still have to be able to kind of read the tea leaves to see where things possibly can go. And I feel like it's our responsibility, um, as leaders of this community to really kind of get, I, I always call it shovel ready, right? To be ready and prepared for where possible funding sources may come from, or how those sources may eventually be restricted. Uh, so if we're gonna go down the path where um, ODOT is only giving. You know, road and street funds to communities that have a plan in place. Uh, you better believe um, that I would like to see our community go down the direction of being ready to get, you know, either have a plan or, or get a plan in place. In order to be ready to receive those dollars, especially when you think about all the major infrastructure needs and the things that we need for the future of our community. So thank you, Counselor Lee, and this has been one of the things I've really enjoyed watching and hearing and, and being part of, you know, seeing you, you, you do here. Really appreciated. Any questions or comments uh, for Counselor Lee or, or on this plan?
And Emily and some of the other members of the committee uh, may be on the line and might want to comment as well.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Exner.
Yeah, I see a, a whole list, honor list of uh, it looks like some great ideas about, about what you think would be great to be on. Some of the um, things that we should be doing. Do you, the uh, committee have any recommendations that we implement? Certain numbers of them? Are there some that were of higher priority than the others? I may have missed that part of the discussion, but uh, you were saying that the council should be the one putting together. A goal of some kind. So I'm just kind of looking for what the committee was thinking in that regard.
Right, we didn't set priorities and priorities could differ in departments since some departments have already taken several steps. Um, so that would really be the next step in the plan, uh, to look at how to implement it, whether there's timelines, priorities. Whatever your direction might be.
Okay, okay.
Uh, so council and Counselor Alex, this will be something that we'll probably want to talk about in our goal planning session coming up. As well as putting into a future work session where we can kind of uh, really divvy through this, figure out uh, if we want the whole thing. Or, or major parts of it, or, or specific parts of it. Uh, but I wanted uh, all of us to hear it from Jan, and then Jan. Um, I'm gonna be looking to personally ask you to continue on in this committee. Uh, you know, everybody that you listed, uh, you were, you know. The only one with the counselor title next to your name, so.
Was on the committee.
Oh, yes, okay, I'm Lori too, but.
Lori was just there. Jen did all the work. Lori was just.
So I, I'd love to see your service continue, Counselor Lee. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, well, with that, we'll go ahead and uh, call this work session to an end. We will um, recess until our. Regular scheduled meeting at seven o'clock. Cross your fingers that our lights are still on by then. Get to that as fast as possible. Go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. Uh, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The states of America. One nation, nation, under God.
Liberty! Don't forget that liberty part, folks. All right, so with that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Pete's old.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Hamblin.
For the last time, present.
Counselor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Not for the last time, here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
And Mayor Pulliam.
We're still going here. Uh, thank you, everybody, uh, for attending tonight's city council meeting. Some of this. Uh, for some of you, this will be your last as counselors. We'll talk about that here in a little bit, but of course, power goes out. Thank you to all three. For your, for your service. Uh, so uh, on our meeting uh, agenda tonight, we'll first ask for any changes to the agenda. Then we'll get into public comment. Uh, just for folks that are tuning in, if you are wishing to have public comment for our master fee schedule. Uh, update, you will have an opportunity later on in our agenda, so please uh, refrain from those public comments at that time. We'll, we'll get into our consent agenda. We'll have resolutions, public hearing for that master fee schedule, which people will have an opportunity to speak on. And then another public hearing for uh, a modification to our construction manager, general contractor, project delivery method. We'll go to our report from our city manager, then we'll go on to committee and council reports. Do a little council recognition, and then we'll adjourn the evening, and just to keep those counselors working for a little bit longer, we'll have an executive session. Uh, at the conclusion of this. Uh, so with that, I will call for any changes to the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to public comment. Here's the oper- uh, just to note again, there will be an opportunity to provide public comment on the master fee schedule. Update and on the C M's uh, C G findings later in this meeting. The council now welcomes your comments on any other matters at this time. Please see the instructions on the agenda. But if you're participating online, you can participate by clicking the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Uh, you'll have three minutes. Remember to state your name and address for the record. Jeff, take us through it.
Okay, Mayor, the first hand I see is uh, Kevin Moss, and so you should be able to unmute yourself now. Uh, please state your name and address for the record, and you will have uh, three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Kevin Moss. I live here in Damascus, twenty-four, six hundred Southeast Three Cedar Street. I grew up in Sandy, oh, right over by the post office and lived my life there and went to high school there. Worked my first job at Tollgate Inn, so I just want to comment tonight on uh, you guys' proposed small grants program to provide. Outdoor permit structured uh, structures for, to support our local restaurants. In working in Sandy, working in one of our local restaurants, I tell you firsthand, that's where as a young person, you learn work ethic. And dedication to public service, so I want to support the council and whatever you guys can do to support our small businesses, and I'm firmly behind you and. Appreciate all for what you're trying to do, so thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Appreciate it, Kevin.
Okay, Mayor, I'll go ahead and click on the next hand here. You should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when there are about twenty seconds left. Welcome.
My, my name is David Breams. Uh, my address is one eight three nine zero, Minig Avenue, uh, Sandy, Oregon. Um, I'm actually in front of the council today regarding the street sweepers that uh, come around once a month that the city contracts with. Um, Stan knows, I've, I've talked to him about this, and uh, you know, especially on my street, and I'm sure it's not just my street. A few of the council members also know today that I, I went out of the way to make sure that my street got cleaned. Um, but just the, the cars that don't move, you know, maybe some kind of notice or some kind of schedule that we can follow. To know exactly what day the street we, street sweepers are gonna come to our neighborhood, um, so we're not listening, you know, almost like the ice cream man, you know, waiting for him to come down the road. So we know when to get those cars out of the way, and then, you know, maybe that, maybe he can write down license plates if the cars just aren't, you know, moving, or he sees the same car in the same area. Because I do have one van on my street that just, it never moves, and unfortunately, that's the only area of the street that I could not get cleaned today. Um, I did the best I could to make sure I could, but you know, it's still, you know, I, I can see the leaves underneath of it, and they're gonna blow into the yards and. You know, we're gonna start back over at square one, so maybe some kind of schedule that can be handed out or. Put on the Facebook page of saying that, you know, on this day or, you know, within the three days of this period, the street sweeper's gonna be here, try to get your neighborhood, you know. Try to get your uh, your cars into the driveways or, you know, move them off to the, you know, somewhere out of the way. Um, you know, it would be nice, you know, because guessing every month and when that guy's gonna be here is, you know, kind of hard, because I don't know when I, when I do have to be. Out of the area for work or, or whatnot. Um, then the other question I had firsthand tonight was uh, regarding the sign. Um, allowing uh, left-hand turns, I think is it Procter or Pioneer, on the end of mining before you cross to go down to the skate park. Um, you know, it's that, that left-hand turn on a red for the one-way. It's just that's still a huge traffic jam area where people just, they don't turn. Whether they can, can or not, they just don't do it, and you know, maybe a sign to remind them that it needs, that they can do it would be helpful.
Thank you, David. Always appreciate your testimony. It always comes with not just problems, but with possible solutions, and so. Uh, always really appreciate that, sir. Thank you very much. Um, uh, Jordan, uh, so I believe, do we own? Do we own that stretch of two eleven now, sir?
Just about. I think the last step is it, it needs to be recorded, um, which I think is supposed to happen this next month. Um, I just got an update this week, so. We're really close, and then we can get our sign.
So, the ones, what, so uh, what we're talking about there, if you're watching in, is, is we just took. Uh, control of a portion of two eleven. One of the things I'll be talking a little bit later on, one of the major accomplishments of this council that we're proud of. And because it's now our jurisdiction, we can get that sign up. It's not the only reason we would, uh, we did this, but it certainly is a nice little cherry on top. So um, yep, we'll definitely be looking to do that as soon as within our jurisdictional control. Uh, with that, Jeff, it looks like we have another hand, just for anybody else watching. Remember to please use the raised hand button or dial star nine if you're participating via telephone.
Okay, Mayor, I'll click on the next name now, and you should be able to unmute yourself. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Greg Becker. I live at one four five eight five Bluff Road. I want to talk about the public safety fee. Well, when are we going to see benefit for this new public safety fee that the council enacted on us? At the last check, we are still down two officers, including a traffic officer, which we really need. I was almost hit at my mailbox this last Saturday by a black Ford pickup doing sixty-plus down Bluff Road. When I yelled at him, he hit the fuel even harder. So the question becomes, if we are paying for the fee and we have not hired. Uh, what does the fee do? Where does it go? It goes into the general fund. What is it paying for? And what it's paying for, is it a part of what the original fee description was?
Uh, Mr. Becker, I will tell you, I think that is perhaps the best public testimony I have had, I have heard you provide. Uh, yet, and that's not to degrade any previous uh, public testimony. Uh, I agree with that a hundred percent. Um, I will definitely uh, later on in my marriage report, uh, look to direct some questions. Um, on that, but that money, that absolutely needs to go to where it's attended to. And we absolutely gotta work hard to get additional officers on the street. Uh, that's how it's intended. And that uh, my remarks at the next swearing-in, I was actually gonna have a little section about just even. You know, we need officers for the growing homeless problem and everything else, so uh, really appreciate those comments, and we'll look into it for you, sir. Thank you.
Stan, can I, can I address that as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, so uh, Greg, also just to, to touch on that, um, I was part of an energy process, um. Over the last month, so they're working on getting two officers through background, or potential officers through background, background checks uh, as we speak. So hopefully though, we'll be remedying a lot of that problem shortly.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we do have another hand. Uh, you should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when there are about twenty seconds left. Welcome.
Thank you. Council members, Mayor, my name is Steve Klein. Uh, address is six three eight two Southeast Thirty Second Terrace in Gresham. Uh, my brothers and I own Scooter's Restaurant, sits at the very beginning of town. Uh, recently took it over a couple of years ago. Mayor, thank you for the fine comment on pizza that you had here a couple of weeks back. Uh, really appreciate that. Uh, thank you. Uh, wanted to talk uh, with you all about um, the permanent structure proposal that you have. And uh, I've seen some conflicting reports that there's been conversation about Main Street, um, and all of Sandy, and wanting to make sure that. Uh, as part of the grant process, um, we have the opportunity to apply, just like uh, all folks uh, kind of in the main drag there on the one-way section. We don't have a patio today. Uh, the first pandemic, we were able to, to weather pretty well, just because we had some. Uh, a unique set of circumstances. This one's hit us much tougher than the last one, so uh, any, any opportunity would be terrific. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Steve, and to address that question, we did uh, end up passing the um, uh, well. We ended up passing as an urban renewal board, the program. Within that, though, there was direction to use general fund dollars. Uh, to look for opportunities, general fund dollars for folks that are not within the urban renewal district. Uh, so we are looking to find ways to look out for you guys, and we really appreciate your business here in our community, almost as much as I enjoy your pizza. So, thank you.
And Scooter should be, Scooter should be in the um, as well as in the commercial zone, which is in the urban renewal district.
Thank you.
Okay, it's just one more reminder, if you'd like to give public comment, there should be a button at the bottom of the screen that says raise hand, or if you're on the phone, dial star nine. But Mayor, I do not see any more raised hands.
We'll move forward. Thank you, Jeff, for your help there. Thank you, everybody, for the public comment. Uh, moving ahead on our agenda, we are now to our consent agenda. If there's not discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Schultz, and a second by Counselor Lee to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye.
And.
Opposed, a nay, or a thumbs down? Motion carries. All right. Moving forward on to resolutions for a public hearing. One second, please. Yes, so here's some instructions for our virtual public hearing this evening. If there is an opportunity for public testimony that will occur after the staff report concludes. When the public testimony period begins, please remember to click the raised hand button if you're participating or if you're on telephone to dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I now open public hearing resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-six at seven thirteen PM. I will now call for Tyler to give the staff's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have electricity and internet at the moment, but my lights are also flickering in Gresham. So apologies if I cut out or delay momentarily. I'll go through this briefly since we have discussed this quite a number of times now at this point. I'll focus less on some of the less controversial topics and as Counselor Lee suggested, maybe hold off some of the more controversial topics to the end of my staff report. So the structure might be a little bit different than you've had it delivered in the past. Essentially, the council has desired to provide smaller, more incremental increases to our master fee schedule instead of holding up and providing larger increases after a number of years. And so that's what staff has attempted to do with this round of fee updates. There are a handful of just general fees such as the business license renewal, late fee and records request fees that we're proposing to increase effective January first, twenty twenty-one. We're proposing a two percent across the board increase for our planning fees to maintain and keep up with CPI. You know, the cost of providing those services and just maintaining an adequate sort of financial structure within the planning department to, to ensure stability long-term. And then some minor increases in the library fees, specifically with the library of things that would also be effective January first, twenty twenty-one. Next, we have some system development charges. So water and transportation, we're proposing a six point one percent increase to keep up with the engineering news record construction cost index. That would be effective February first, twenty twenty-one. And then a sewer SDC increase of five point five percent, again, based on that same index, also effective February first, twenty twenty-one. Those are sort of the synopsis and base discussion of those other fees. I'll move now to water and sewer charges, which I think might be the more controversial topic here this evening. Controversial is the wrong word, more discussion, I should say. We are currently proposing in the staff report a thirteen percent increase across the board for water and sewer rates. That's something that's been built into the rate model that we've had in place and have been working with for a number of months now. We first addressed this in November at the November sixteenth work session, to kind of provide council some basic information on that. And then again, at the December seventh meeting, where the council opted to push this to the twenty-first to provide for additional time to receive public comment regarding those rates. I will say, you know, since the initial discussion we had in November, we've issued notice in the utility bill newsletter. We've had some more proactive push out of information on the city's Facebook page. We've mailed the top one hundred non-residential customers information regarding this thirteen percent increase so that those businesses could adequately plan for the proposed increase. That was one of the items that we received feedback from last year when we did a rate increase is that they weren't notified perhaps soon enough or in a, you know, had enough advanced early plan for that rate increase. So we did some outreach to the top one hundred of those customers to ensure that they knew this was coming. We've also provided now at this meeting, specific public testimony or time for public testimony specifically for these proposed rate increases. And from the looks of it, we have a handful more attendees than we did at the last meeting. So I think that outreach, hopefully, you'll reach some of our community members. There was some brief discussion and then I'll wrap up here in just a moment. There was some brief discussion at the last meeting about delaying some rates. I believe Counselor Exner asked that question when we were nearing the end of the original conversation regarding this. I did run some preliminary numbers and it looks as though if we delay the rate increase, it would be approximately seventeen thousand dollars for water and thirty-four thousand dollars for sewer per month of a loss in revenue. We would need to look at reaching up, reaching back out to our consultants to update our rate model to reflect what that would do long-term to our rates. But I think initial projections look like we would have to do, you know, obviously much more substantial rate increase than the eight percent we have planned for next year. You may recall there was a sort of a structure to these rate increases over the next eight years or so. And so just I want to be mindful of that fact that a delay now will likely result in a larger increase later on down the road. But we'll continue to work with the, you know, consultants on our rate model and update that as we receive more information and better information on the sewer treatment facility as a whole and that, that project in its entirety.
Thank you, Tyler. Appreciate it. With that, is there any questions for staff before we go into public comment? Okay. I lost my place. I gotta find out where I was. Okay, public testimony. Guidelines for those who wish to speak, please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. Now, remember, if you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I will now call on any testimony on this proposal. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes each. Jeff.
Okay, Mayor, appears we do have Mr. Becker. I will, you should be able to unmute yourself now, sir, and please state your name and address again for the record and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you again. My name is Greg Becker. I reside at one four five eight five Bluff Road. I gotta say, with citizens losing their jobs, unable to make rent and put food on the table, this country hasn't seen times like this in over a hundred years. Yet the council is deliberating rate increases on basic necessities like water and sewer. What, what it's like is saying Merry Christmas, but by the way, here's your new increase bill. Hope you're able to live and afford to eat. All I can say is shame on us. This is not the time for increases. I ask that this be tabled to a future time when your constituents are back on their feet and able to afford this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Appreciate your public testimony tonight. Thank you. Jeff.
Okay, Mayor, I'll just take a look at the list one more time. And Mayor, I do not see any more raised hands.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. I'll look for a staff recap and recommendation.
Sorry, forgot I muted myself. So for a brief recap, you know, we, we as staff have been really working towards meeting councils' desire to have these smaller, more incremental and manageable increases. Ultimately, the recommendation would be to approve these increases as identified in the staff report. I will add one additional piece of information, just looking at our current status of accounts. Utility accounts, that is. We have about four hundred and forty accounts that are past due. For reference, we have four thousand utility accounts. So that's just a hair over a ten percent. Those range in past due from thirty days to a hundred and eighty days. There's a handful of accounts that, you know, didn't get shut off back in March when we originally suspended shut offs and have just not made payment sense. When you look at accounts that are severely past due, three or four months or greater, it's about a hundred and seventy-five or so. You know, right around the five percent mark. So the past due accounts, and I bring this up just to illustrate, you know, help illustrate the impact of the pandemic has on our utility customers. And it's been a fairly small percentage, not to take that lightly or to, you know, overlook those customers that are experiencing difficult financial times right now. But just trying to provide you a picture of what the accounts look like at this point in time.
Thank you, Tyler. Appreciate that. With the recap and recommendation, I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Counselor Exner and a second by Counselor Pete Sol to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Opposed, a nay, or a thumbs down. Okay, motion carries. Public hearing is now closed at seven twenty-three. Now I'm calling for discussion by the hearing body. I know I had some counselors reach out to me individually over the weekend with some comments, so I'll entertain any opinions now. Counselor Pete Sol.
Yeah, I'll just restate what I said at the previous couple of meetings that we had back when we said to bring this forward is that I appreciate what staff has done, the hard work on this. You know, the timing of it with the pandemic and everything going on is definitely hard. But we've also got to learn from our past of not making small incremental increases. Otherwise, we run the risk of falling back into what we've already have had happen to us over the last twenty to thirty years of not doing that. I look at these and, and most of these fees are for, you know, some of the developments and those type of things which should be paying for themselves. And making sure that we stay up to snuff on that. So we aren't having the current residents, you know, subsidizing future developments in those developments because we are not keeping up to inflation or meeting the CPI standards that we should be. For the rates, we all been on this council from when we have heard about the rate models that we had. And we're stuck in a situation where if we don't continue to follow that model, then we are going to be paying out of that from the general fund to keep going or find even more for not being able to keep up financially to be able to meet our milestone matrix to replace our sewer treatment plant and also to keep up with our payments and our clean water as well. And look at the rates, they aren't very much. We went through a very hard cycle a year ago. We didn't like that one either. No one likes rate increases. I don't either. But for the sake of all the counselors that are retiring today, I'll say, I've been on this council a long time. That was and one of the things is, is I learned the hard way by being really nice and being able to not raise those fees back then has really made it a struggle later on in small incremental amounts to have large increases that are very painful like we did last year and some other aspects that we've had to go through over the course of many years. And so we've been working on this process for about eight to ten years. And so that's good. I look at these rates and they, for some of them and for a single family home, they're not, you know, just a few dollars. I know a few dollars is hard on, on that, but it's better than what we went through last year in not kicking that can down the road to where we need another big, large increase. So my recommendation would be to continue with this. And thank you for your hard work, Tyler and staff.
Thank you, Counselor Pete Sol. It looks like Counselor Smallwood is next in the queue.
Yeah, so Jeremy, I do agree with what you said because it, you know, over the years, not increasing fees. However, having said that, sitting down, preparing for tonight's meeting and counting somewhere between twenty-five and thirty businesses in the city that are closed or functioning at much lower capacity than, than, than they're able to make ends meet. Recognizing how many people in our community are employed in those, in those establishments and are currently either not working or working limited hours and not receiving any type of, or limited assistance. And then factoring in how many people in our community are not working right now at all because they work in other businesses in other towns or in locations throughout the metro area. So while I would like to move forward with a fee increase because I realize what's, what's looking at us coming down the pipe. I'm in favor of increasing the, the SDCs right now and making sure that development pays for that. But I will not, at this time, support increase in sewer or water rates.
Thank you, Counselor Smallwood. I saw a hand up from Counselor Hamlin and then I'll go to Counselor Exner.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm actually going to echo both counselors in the fact that we have kicked this down the road for a long time. And, and it was probably nice living in Sandy and not having major fee increases. And now last year hit everybody pretty hard with the fee increases. And then we go right into COVID and unemployment and impacts on people's wages. And so for me, really where I'm at too is I appreciate Mr. Becker's comments. I do think that now is not the right time to hurt the people of Sandy any further with rate increases. As much as I know we need it and as much as I know it is going to push it out and have to be increased at a larger amount later. I just think during the pandemic with the economic impact is just not the time to do it. I am in support of some of the other fees though that are proposed, just not ones that impact direct citizens through utilities at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Hamlin. Those comments are very appreciated. Counselor Exner.
Yeah, I have been on the council for a while and I can recall the times when we had a rate proposals for our planning department that were pretty significant and a lot of comments about how that affected people's planning and how they looked at their bottom line when they put together the penciling of the economics for their developments and such. So to me, keeping the, the planning and the, it's called the non-swear and water fees in a small increases originally, a very short period of time, really makes some sense to me. I want people to know what it's going to cost them. Quite frankly, the fees that we're talking about here, I was looking at several of them this past week and I doubt that we would even see much increase in the prices of the houses as a realtor because of just seeing how people are bidding on houses at this point and would overcome anything, I think, that would be added to by a rate increase, especially something fairly small. We're talking about less than ten percent for that. So to me, it makes sense to be able to keep the increases going for the non-water and sewer issues. Now go to the part that's really tough. I can't tell you how important it is for me to move forward on our sewer plan. It is crucial. I mean, I don't know if there's anything more important at this point for us to show our detractors and our supporters that we are moving forward as fast as we can in our sewer and storm drain cleanup and improvements. It's just crucial for me. But I'm also looking at how some of these folks are going through unemployment, businesses closing down, employees, much the same thing that the other counselors have talked about already. I would propose, I know we're talking about what it would mean for us in terms of our financing, in terms of our being able to keep up with our payments when it comes to borrowing these things. Why something halfway in between? Instead of doing it in March, let's wait six months. And let's hope that we can get some return on our unemployment decrease. Businesses have a chance to find some way to open back up again. And let's check it out in six months and see what we go on, knowing I just know that we're going to end up feeling pressure from our finance side of the staff will be talking to us about what that's going to mean in terms of being able to pay for our loans and the things that we're going to have to do when it comes to fixing our sewer system up. So I would say go ahead with the increases on the non-swear water. Wait six months, let's check it out, see where we stand in terms of crisis or not. Maybe even look at something alternative, maybe some things from our other funds, maybe some way to supplement it. But at least let's give the people a chance to recover some, so.
Thank you, Counselor Exner. Any further comment by counsel? Counselor Lee. You're muted, Counselor.
Okay, I agree with other counselors who have spoken. When we put together the trajectory for the price increases, we didn't know that COVID was right around the corner. We didn't know that people were losing their jobs, that businesses who pay a fair amount of the water and sewer fees were going to be hurting. So I can only suggest that we change that trajectory that we table the sewer and water fee for now and relook at the trajectory once people are back on their feet and can afford to move forward. I know that gives us a temporary slowing, but I don't think that it would be as bad to have that temporary slowing as what it will do to people in our community. The rest of the fees other than water and sewer, I'm fine with because those are created by development and paid for by development.
Thank you, Counselor Lake and Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I was kind of echo what others have said. I, I worry about not implementing all the fees right now. As Tyler said, it will, it is going to hurt us later. But, you know, I also agree with what everyone else is saying, and we see our friends and neighbors struggling right now. So it's like being in a, between a rock and a hard place. But definitely agree with going forward with all the other fee schedule. But I'd be open to tabling the other talk and kind of seeing where we're at in a little bit, I guess. But I guess I'm feeling kind of cautious about that too. Just, I don't want to be back where we were. So I don't know. It's rough, but I have nothing helpful to add, I don't think.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, so just a couple of comments. I don't know, I've been in a pretty blunt mood lately. I, I would agree with other counselors on the economic times that we face now, where our residents are. To Counselor Smallwood's point, the businesses that are either been shut down or dramatically affecting their employees and, and where that leaves them. You know, when we've, when we, I first started two years ago at the beginning of this project, my first meeting, I wasn't even sworn in yet, was on this wastewater where it was really kind of revealed to council this mandate, the scope of the project, how big it was going to be. And I really took that on. And at the time, we were working with DEQ. We had a new city manager in place. We had a plan and we did a lot of work both on the staff level and council to kind of dredge ahead on this project. I feel like we sit at a different circumstance today than we did even previous to that last rate increase. Couple of things. One is economically, as I mentioned, and others, our ratepayers are in a completely different spot today than we were then. We also had DEQ as a partner of ours, trying to work hand in glove with us as a city, knowing that we had a major problem and knowing that we needed to tackle this together. And we felt like we were teammates. I no longer feel like we are teammates. And I am very resident to push forward with things that are going to be on the back of our ratepayers, especially in these economic times, and I don't know if we have a partner in DEQ. Especially when you look at the drastic decisions and leadership positions this council's been through the last couple of years with drastic rate increases on our neighbors, to be treated in a fashion that we're currently being treated by DEQ is saddening to me. So I want to see a much better partnership on the other side as, as our council moves forward. There's also something else that weighs on me, and that is, is that I had counselors, and I could still do tonight, that truly understand what growth pain for itself means. And that you have to have a certain amount of growth and development in your community in order to pay for future infrastructure projects. And because of the knowledge and all the work that this council has done, I felt it was important that we showed the leadership to, you know, really make this move and take this on ourselves. But as I continue to hear an anti-growth narrative out of individuals that will be joining this council, while I look very much forward to a collaborative relationship, and I've been very vocal on that. I do want to make it clear that if we don't have future development, commercial, residential, or otherwise, there's only one group of people that we're going to have to turn to to pay for these increases. That's all of you, all of you, our neighbors. So if you want to get more money into the pie to help pay for all of this, you are going to have to get behind some strategic development in this community. And I do believe that there's going to be a bit of a learning curve for some of these new counselors. And they are going to have to come to a decision on how to pay for this thing, especially when there's a few that's tied so closely to it. And on top of that, I do want to charge our staff with something. This is a problem that has developed over the last twenty or thirty years. We have not had recommendations in front of past councils to slowly raise the rate. Counselor Pete Sold and others have pointed that out. We have not raised our SDC charges since nineteen ninety-seven on wastewater. We never had a recommendation to do so in front of council. We've continued to have a litany of fines that have gone in the Clackamas River Basin for many years, spanning over several decades. No change in direction or course. I just, I really feel before we lean on our neighbors who are struggling like they are today, we've got to make sure our house is in order. So those are some of my comments on tonight. I too am with the rest of our, our council on not wanting to put any additional fee increases on our residents, but am willing to look at it on future, on future development and growth. And my understanding is, is that Tyler, you've been working on what a possible recommendation might look like.
Yes, so if we just build on the original proposed recommendation of I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-six, I would add the language excluding sections seven A, B, C, D, and section eight A and B. So that would remove the, sorry, Counselor Hamlin, I interrupted you. Just to be clear, that would remove specifically the water and sewer utility increases that would still leave intact the SDC increases that I noted, as well as all the other planning charges and miscellaneous, you know, minor changes that we've talked about.
So can I say some moves still?
Yep. I got a motion from Counselor Hamlin. I see two hands. Let me go to Counselor Exner and then Smallwood.
Discussion.
Second.
Can we do discussion before or after our second?
I, I don't think it really matters as far as process goes. I'll have a take, well, let's, before we have the second, we'll go to discussion. Go ahead, Counselor.
So I mentioned in my earlier discussion, I, I don't want to just leave it alone. I, I think we should add to this. We should check it periodically. I suggested six months from now because it would be a halfway point between what we did today and what we would do. I know that we've got other rate scheduled increase in about a year that we'd look at a halfway point. And I don't have a big preference about where that check would be, but I, I do feel so strongly about this not putting us into a bind about our financing, that I think we need to check this thing periodically before we just say none for the upcoming year. So I would, I would propose that we change it to a, either a six-month point check or some period between now and the next scheduled rate increase. And I'm suggesting six months. We check it anyway.
I'll amend my original motion to include a review no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. With that, I have a motion and Counselor Smallwood, you want a second and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Did we do that right?
Yeah, it was fine.
Okay.
Counselor Hamlin, you just had to ask one more time.
Thank you.
All right. Let me see here.
Always needs an attaboy.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So with that, we're going into another public hearing. I remember there will be public testimony offered in this as well. To do so at the appropriate time, please click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I will now open public hearing resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-seven at seven forty-three, December twenty-first. I will call for the staff report. Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this resolution would authorize an alternative project delivery method or a construction manager, general contractor procurement for the wastewater treatment plant condition assessment improvements project. In November, the council awarded a contract to West Yost Associates to provide the engineering services for this project. And their proposal was based on using this contracting method. This is about, this is the only way that they feel the work can be accomplished in the following year and have the improvements in place and operational by November one of twenty twenty-one. So that's why we've come back to the council for this. We did this originally for, also in the summer for the collection system improvements project, which is underway right now. So we have some experience with this contracting method and it's very well. It's a very competitive proposals for that project, and we would expect we would see, receive the same amount of competition. The primary advantage here, there's a, there's a attachment to the staff report that kind of discusses the procurement method. But the primary advantage is you get the contractor involved early in the process and they can provide, they can work hand in hand with the engineer to design that and point out issues that may not be seen by one party or the other. And so it's more of a collaboration than a, you know, here's the sort of plans, build it this way type of procurement method. So staff is recommending that. And this, this would only be authorizing the contracting method. Council would still review the CMGC proposals we get once we solicit them. And they would also have a chance to review the guaranteed maximum prices for the work that would result from this contracting method. So there's no budgetary impact at this point, just authorizing the method. The council would still choose, select the contractor and approve the GMP for the bid packages that would result from the design and engineering work.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Any questions for Mike before we go to public testimony? I, Counselor Exner.
Quick, Mike, how many, how much time do you think this would save in terms of a standard contract, just ballpark?
Oh, probably close to a year.
That much? Oh.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and turn to public testimony. Remember, please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. Now calling for any testimony on this proposal. Just a reminder, state your name and mailing address for the record, and you'll have three minutes each. Jeff, please take us through the process.
And as the mayor indicated, you can click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or dial star nine if you're on the phone. Just take a, take a look at the list of attendees for any hands. And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Thank you, Jeff. I will now call for a staff recap and recommendation. Mr. Walker.
Yeah, the staff recommendation is to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, and the suggested motion is I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-seven.
Thank you, sir. I will now call for a motion to close the public hearing.
I think a motion to close public hearing.
I see a motion from Counselor Hamlin to close the public hearing, a second from Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Perfect. Opposed, nay, or thumbs down. Motion carried. I will close this public hearing at seven forty-seven. With that, looking for discussion from the hearing body, I think we should move forward.
I love that it will save a year of time. Awesome. Yeah, that's great. Good news. So I'll make a motion. If there's no other discussion, that we approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-seven.
I'll second. John Havitt, his last thing he's going to do.
Carl gets it.
The motion from Counselor Pete Sold and a second from Counselor Hamlin. It's the last meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye, or thumbs up.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, or a thumbs down. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Really appreciate it. With that, we'll move forward on our agenda to our report from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's continue talking about wastewater. So this is called the Pineapple Express or whatever it is, did bring a lot of rainfall. So Viola was working pretty hard down there, trying to keep track of the flows and managing that. We'll have to see how the data comes in next week, but definitely a lot of flow coming into the treatment plant. And the cool thing, I guess, the silver lining is that we do have the flow meters in the system. And so we actually, it's one of those validating things where we were waiting for one of these big storms to see and validate the models that we have done previously to see that increased flow coming from these rainfall events. And it was pretty, pretty significant, and it actually confirmed the path that we are on with our current collection system work. And that's basins eight, two, and potentially six being those highest priorities. So we gathered some good data. You know, it, it was a challenge down there for them. I think you saw the city of Portland had combined sewer overflow, and I'm sure other communities around the state with this rain event were having troubles too. We did have a great meeting with the watershed councils last week. Thank you for attending Counselor Exner and Smallwood. Lee, Counselor like Walker was there as well. We heard some great input, some questions and some, some desire to dive into the data, especially on the Sandy Riverside a little bit more. I think the exciting thing with the watersheds too is this opportunity to continue to partner with them on environmental projects. And we've been exploring more of that angle too. We had a good meeting with Freshwater Trust, and I think there's other groups that we can tap to work with the watersheds, doing more restoration and mitigation work in our, in our watersheds, especially Tickle Creek and Clackamas, and then potentially with the Sandy as we get into the permitting for the new outflow, go in that direction. On the wastewater rate increase, we'll plan to bring back the model in six months and keep you updated. We do have a meeting tomorrow with our financial advisor, so we'll share the news with them and adjust our planning for financings. And does give us an opportunity to kind of dive deeper into the USDA options with the loans there. We had started that work with them a couple of weeks ago, and we're continuing to explore that. There's an opportunity for refunding of one of our existing USDA loans as part of our financing packages. So, you know, the, the, you know, the impact of delays could mean potentially, you know, a bigger rate increase at a later time to kind of catch up and get to our debt ratios for, you know, covering the WIFI alone if we're, if we're lucky to get it this year. And the other revenue bonds, but we'll look for every opportunity to keep those, you know, as low as possible and explore other options here with like those things I said with refundings and the USDA. So we'll, we'll report back on that. Switching gears now to goal setting, I think you saw from Jeff's email, we're pinning down those dates and should have them firmed up here pretty quick for January, late January. In the meantime, the facilitator is going to be reaching out to meet with each individual counselor and talk with you going into goal setting. And I think Jeff has almost everybody pinned down for, for those interviews with the current and continuing. And Counselor Alex, so looking forward to the, to those, those goal setting meetings. And then just a brief update on COVID with the Corona virus relief funds. We've about spent our allotment. We originally were slated for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we've spent now the vast majority of that. I think we have about ten thousand dollars left after sending out the checks for the latest round of the emergency small business loans. So I think, I think honestly, it's a pat on the back for the council to put that money to good use, sending so much out the door for our small business community and folks in town. And, and then also being able to mitigate the costs of the response on, on the city with the measures that we have to do with our facilities and, and, you know, serving more meals and things like that. So, you know, a round of applause for, for the council and Tyler and staff for putting those funds to good use for the city of Sandy. Putting those funds to good use for the city of Sandy. Um, and uh. Uh, you know, the only last thing I wanted to say, I know we're gonna talk about later, but while I have the floor for a second. Um, you know, I just want to say thank you to the, you know, the counselors that are outgoing. Um, you know, it's been a really challenging couple of years. Really challenging year this last year. Um, very difficult for all of us in a lot of different ways. Um, but you know, here we are on the, the shortest day of the year. So they only get longer from here in a good way. Um, you know, we have the conjunction or whatever event going on tonight. Um, and kind of fitting that. It's kind of a nice bright night to um with Jupiter and Saturn being up there to wish the councilors well um as they head on to new things. But personally, for me, it's been such a joy working with um Jan, John and Bethany. You've been great counselors and I've learned a lot from you and. Um, it takes such a courage to be a city counselor. Um, and I, you know, for us staff, I think we recognize that. Hopefully the public recognize that as well. The stuff that you guys, you know, deal with and have to make decisions on. Um, and you know, just volunteering your time. I mean. Um, yeah, it's, it's quite a sacrifice. So well, you guys will be sorely missed, especially um, you know, from me and, and the other counselors. I know we'll talk about it a little bit, but um, I'm just grateful that, that I had the opportunity to work with, with you and um. Hopefully you'll stay involved in other ways. I know uh some of you will. Um, so we're looking forward to that, but thank you for your service. And that, I will um uh cede the floor to the mayor.
Thanks. Feels like Congress.
Thanks, uh, Jordan. Appreciate that report. Uh, all right, we're in the council committee reports, uh, per usual. Uh, you're up, Counselor Schultz.
Thanks. I don't have any big report tonight. Um, I will miss everyone. It's definitely a bittersweet meeting for me. Moving on to some different stuff, but um I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your support in my um. Childcare project this year especially. I really appreciated the, having the backing of you all as I was working with the county and. Um, and the staff in our city to get some really tangible stuff done. That was really. Great to see and really great to have all of you behind us on that. I hope to stay somewhat involved with that project moving forward. Um, in a different capacity, but um, so I just wanted to mention that. And I learned a lot from each of you and I will definitely miss each of you very much. Um. I think, yeah, I, I can't do each individual person or I'll cry. So um. I, it's been an honor to serve the town and I am looking forward to continuing to do that, but maybe in a different role. Going forward, so um, I'll still see you around.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, have very much appreciated you. Uh, Counselor Exner.
Uh, I'm not sure how far I want to go with this one, but I also want to say thank you to John, Bethany and Jan. It's um. I'm not a crier, so you won't see me crying tonight, but um I do think I'll miss you a bunch. Uh. It has been a, a wild ride for us all. I think that's just one of the things that I appreciate of it, so. I don't know if I'm gonna create anybody else to cry. I'll probably cry later on in my sleep or something tonight. I do have a couple of things to talk about. Jordan, maybe it's Mike. Uh, I see a lot of work going on in the corners of the sidewalks. Uh, a lot around McCormick Road. Is that part of the uh. Uh drain water repairs and such, but I see several of them. It's probably four or five corners and they're all in the corners. They're removing concrete and.
Say ADA improvements project. Stuff is doing the demolition and then we have the contractor coming in and, and doing ADA um upgrades.
Oh, oh, okay. Uh, does that include the Tickle Creek Trailhead? That, no, that's been an issue from a number of people.
Uh, it just includes the area of east to eleven, south of twenty-six, west of Langen Sand. And north of Gary Street.
So it doesn't include the, the Tickle Creek Trailhead in, huh? Okay.
No.
Yeah, that's one of the things I've heard from several folks and um glad to see the ADA being done in the old part of town, but um. Why, I'd sure like to see us do something on the trailhead there too. Such a popular trail. Everybody I talked to seems like they're always. I hear somebody actually runs it. I don't know if that's true or not, but um I've heard that. Mostly people slog through the mud. I also did attend the watershed meeting that was happened, uh, the combined Clackamas and Sandy. I thought it was very good. Appreciate. All the preparation to get that part done. One of the things that I heard was some really high level of support from the Clackamas side. I, those folks um are really in our pocket, I think, in terms of supporting us. And I sure would love to see us use that, uh, take it for a ride or something. Next time we go for a grant, next time we have a concern from. One of our, I'll call it detractors. I won't say who it is. Maybe we can use that as a way to. Defend where we are and, and that such thing. Uh, appreciate that. Uh, on the sandy side. Uh, I heard quite a few responses about uh the, uh, appreciate the work. It's gonna be done for moving everything to the. Rosin Lake, but there was some concerns about the summertime deposits of water into the Sandy River. I think we're gonna have a little bit of a conversation about that one. Um, heard more than a few people say we should. Limit that as much as possible. Actually, they said it's eliminated. So we'll have to, we'll probably see some of that kind of comment coming down the road. But I think otherwise, everybody were very positive about going towards the Rosin Lake. And uh the way we're kind of treating a new satellite system. So that's great that way. Uh, I won't get too much detail of this, but I did attend the Parks and Trails Advisory. Comments and, and questionnaires today. Had a good bevy of people. Uh, thought that went very well. Appreciate. Uh, Sarah Richardson putting that all together and uh I do think, and Don. I forgot Don's name. The chair.
Robertson.
There he is, yeah. I did a great job of leading us through that and appreciate the extra work that was happening there. So that is a. A good deal. I hesitate to even bring this last object up, but I do want to say that uh there seems to be an awful lot of. Work going on with the way the governor has isolated us and kept us uh from opening up our. Rest, our motels, not motels, the um markets and the. Uh restaurants and the food, this places and some of our other, like the gyms and such. And it's really hard to see businesses going under. It just makes me feel like we are not treating this right. And I really want to compliment the rest of the council here for helping us and those uh permanent. Additions to the uh outside seating was just wonderful. I wish I'd have thought about that myself, so. But I think it's really important for us to do things in the legal side of things. I, I, I am not, like you've heard before, I'm sure. Uh, a guy that wants to go across the line in terms of illegal. And I know there have been people that have called me up and said. We need to open everything up, but that's not where I would be at this point. I think we need as a co- as a council though, to say that. Governor Brown, uh, you gotta know what you're doing to our businesses is not right. And we are feeling far more impact than really we should. And I, I know that there's fear about the, the uh coronavirus killing people and hurting people, but our. Businesses have got to be found a way to, to open up. I, I would suggest that we have some letters, some support letter for. Looking into ways to open up the, the restaurants, the gyms, the places that I know can find a way to protect themselves. And the people that use those facilities in a way that we won't see any increase. And I, I guess I'm an advocate of doing something like that. Uh, I, I really am concerned about how we fit ourselves together. So I'd be interested in hearing what the rest of the counselors think about making some sort of a statement to the governor's office. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Counselor Exner. Um, Counselor Lee.
Yes, I want to say how much I've really enjoyed working with all my fellow counselors and the staff. We have great staff members. And that we were able to welcome Jordan during my tenure. That's gone very well. So I will miss all of you a lot, but you'll see me around the community and other forums. Maybe I'll call in and testify.
Thank you, Counselor Lee. Really appreciate you. Um, Counselor Hamlin.
Thanks, Mayor. And similar to the other counselors tonight being the last night, um, a little emotional. Uh, I, I, I think I knew back in the summer that I wasn't planning on running and shared with Jordan and swarm to secrecy. Um, but I've had kind of that light at the end of the tunnel. Um, I don't know that folks always know. How much time counselors and mayors give uh to the community. And I say that, that mirrors only the amount of time that the staff give to this community as well too. Um, and really, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve alongside all the different city counselors and mayors. Um, and city managers as well too. It was a huge privilege to lead the hiring of Jordan Wheeler. Um, and also to be able to do his review before I left as well too. Um, David, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you as a city attorney as well too. All the department heads and city staff. I've appreciated all of the interactions and time that you spend. On informing us to make the best decisions we possibly can. Um, this has absolutely been a privilege. I had no intentions ever in my life. Of ever running for an elected office. I think the only thing I did was in like my junior year of high school as a class officer. And outside of that, I don't know that I have any intention on running for anything ever again, but I'm sure. Somebody will reach out at some point. There'll be an opportunity. You know, I'll probably put my name in the hat. Um, but um, I'm here if you ever need me. Uh, like Jan, I may pop into a council meeting, uh, but I will come with popcorn. I probably won't do public comment. Um, and see how you're all doing, but I just want to wish you all the best over this next few years as well too. Hopefully don't have much turnover in council. And uh, Jordan, I just want to say appreciate you. I appreciate. All of your leadership that you've provided with this, the city. You've probably had to tackle in the first couple of years as you're, in your career as a city manager. Some of the most challenging and complex issues. Um, but here's what I say to all my managers at the college as well too. This is a once in a career kind of thing. You're only gonna replace the wastewater treatment facility once. Um, good news and hopefully some of these other ta- issues we've tackled like COVID only happen once as well too. So it should be all smooth sailing from here on out for all of you. And uh, just thanks for the opportunity to, to be a part of it all.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate it. Um, Counselor Smallwood.
Well, I've already kind of said my spiel about the, the counselors uh exiting and I'm, I'm sure it'll come up again, but uh. And I'll mention it at that time, so I don't want to use up too much time here. Um, so uh, yes, was able to attend the uh. Watershed meeting this week. Uh, it was very informative. I was a little late, so I missed the first part, but uh. I agree with everything Carl uh said. Clackamas is very excited. Uh, I think mostly because we're gonna be decreasing our flows into their area. And Sandy is concerned because we want to increase our flows to theirs. So that's, that's kind of uh what we're looking at there in a nutshell. Uh, we did have four or uh, excuse me, five uh interviewees for our four open uh parks board positions today. And that is exciting. I think I made the comment before we started interviews that uh. You know, the, the entire time I've been on council, we've had trouble getting people to participate. Uh, and want to uh participate in city government. And I think all you need is a little controversy and people come out of the woodwork and wanna, and wanna get on board and participate. And help make decisions. So that's a good thing. Um. I did also want to uh, thanks to Chief Roberts uh for getting back to us and uh to ODOT for working on cleaning up. Uh, the area there between Industrial Way and Highway twenty-six of the garbage that's now flowing into Highway twenty-six. Um, and it sounds like they'll be picking that up tomorrow. I did want to note, because I was on Tickle Creek Trail earlier today, that there are now two. Grocery carts full of garbage at the entrance of the trail on the uh, on the uh three hundred and sixty-second side. So not super excited about that. Um. Also on Saturday, uh, attended a open organ meeting um with uh area business owners. Uh, from all over the Portland metropolitan area. Uh, Malala, Estacada, Sandy, uh, Gresham, Fairview, Troutdale. Uh, I'll leave somebody out. I'm sure there are even businesses there from Portland. I would encourage everyone uh as city leaders, regardless of how you feel. Um, to educate yourself and speak to and talk to these business owners uh who are fighting for their livelihood. Um, and quite frankly, they're terrified uh on both ends of the spectrum. And uh. Again, regardless of how you feel about it, it's imperative in decision-making uh that we understand, understand both sides. Of uh, of any conflict or any situation. So uh, really, really feel for those guys. And uh, I will definitely be attending, attending more meetings just for my own educational purposes um as well. So uh, that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Smallwood. Counselor Pete Sold.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I'll try to get through this without crying. As you all know, I'm, I'm the crier of the group. Uh, but uh, I have just have to say, uh, what a great town we live in, you know? I gotta go play Santa Claus because we weren't, you know, going over to relatives' houses and staying there for long periods of time. So I went and dropped off some gifts and had to drive through some um other communities along our trip. And every time I went through a community, I was just like, wow, Sandy is just beautiful. It's great. It's amazing. As character, it has character, right? And it's just, uh, it just, you know, even this time when we don't have leaves and flowers and everything else. And um, just our Sandy style to who we are, our Tickle Creek Trail to activities we have. Um, just, it's just a blessing to live here um in Sandy. Um, and uh, so it just reminded me of that. And it has to do with all of you guys here in this window or, or community that lives around us and our staff, especially our staff. And during this time, the holidays, I know it's hard. It's cold, it's wet, things aren't working, power's going out. Having to deal with overflows of sewer uh stormwater or whatever because of these hard rains. Um, but you guys make the city amazing. Um, I know it's on the agenda for later, uh thirteen point one, but I guess everyone's doing it right now. Um, as recognizing um our three counselors that are uh moving on. Um, so. So um. I just want to say I call all of you guys my friends. You know, we don't agree on everything and we don't need to. And, and that's what makes you friends. So. I wrote it down. Jan, you're my clean water friend. Enormous amounts of knowledge and skill and from the state. Sending me all those emails about going on for broadband. You're one, you're asking me about all these broadband tech issues. On the other hand, you're sending me all the grants and everything. And so I appreciate that. Because you may not understand the detail that I do. No one else on council does, but that's what makes us all unique. We all have our areas of expertise. Um, but you kept on supporting and trying to help out on those different things. Um, and uh, just enormous knowledge you have with the state. And the water conservation area and just what you brought to our city in the last little over two years, two plus few months is. You know, just been a blessing. And Bethany, um, your new ideas, young mom. Um, you know, I got onto council and I didn't have any kids yet, but I was the new young uh person on council. You know, a few decades ago, but you know, it was um what people, you know, just was like, oh. Jeremy, you're on here, you know, and sorry for all the white haired, um, balding uh city council, counselors. On this one, as well as all around the county. I go to the county meetings and it just was like, oh, new bait, fresh bait, you know, and. And just where we could see you go and just how you grew. And I got to know you on parks and just the. The love you had for our community, our parks, our kids. You know, my kids are just a little bit older than yours, but just what I learned on the parks as well. And just realizing and fighting for those things that our kids want to grow up in this community, because that's why we're doing this. And then this last year, just as just in parks before I had kids, I didn't really know much about the parks. Because you know, or that wasn't one of my passions, um, but childcare and um, and childcare. Uh, it, just educating me, educating the staff, just this. Realizing our community is suffering um and not knowing why or how, just what you did there was um really. I know with uh Counselor Lee as well, but um just bring that to the forefront and just using your expertise that you had. Just will be very impactful. You um. Things are being built right now that you had a huge fingerprint on our community. And then John.
Just saying, that's all I have to say for tonight.
No, I mean, I don't care what people think. It feels like you've been on longer than you really have. In a good way. I think you started six years ago. Is that right? Five. Okay, see, it feels like.
Counsel right before that.
Yeah, it feels like you've been on a lot longer than that. And you know, it comes with all that. Wisdom. You've been a part of so many big projects. And your wisdom behind it, your knowledge, your passion for our community. I love your story. You're running through town. On Hood to Coast going, wow, this is amazing town and then move here and then get on council budget and council. And then just made it even better. From the things that you've. Gone through and fought for. And been such a steadfast. Wisdom. The city is better for it. Oh wait, I have a second page because I wrote two pages for you. You are. You're a quiet giant, I think. When you speak. You bring out a lot of wise thoughts and experience. You'd hear me over the years say, I want to hear what John thinks. Because it was important. You didn't always speak, but I knew you had advice. I might not want to hear because it would go against what I thought I the city should go in a direction. But that was okay. I still wanted to know what you thought. I'll miss you on the council and your wisdom. But I know where to go see some lights. Thank you for bringing not only to the city council, your leadership. Something unique in our town. That represented you. That had nothing to do with council. There, I'm done.
Thanks, counselor. I'm going to give an actual report and then go into it just so I can recover. From all that, but just, yeah, wow. Definitely. So a couple of things just on my mayor's report. One is on the Business Relief Fund. First, I just. Because I'm going to say some things I heard from a local business owner on it, I just first want to start with like. What a wonderful program. Thank you to staff and for everyone that served on that committee and everything for what you guys did and your dispersal of the funds. Something we're very proud of. I did have a local business owner reach out to me. Who did not receive. The funds, I believe on the first go around. I'm not sure about applying on the second go around. And just a couple of items there. One is is we never turned around and responded or provided an explanation to people who did not receive the grant. So just, you know, we want to make sure that we're following up and people are taking the time to fill an application if they didn't receive it, at least some sort of word from the city would be nice. Now, the individual also mentioned the transit tax. I do understand the committee, especially on the first round and then continue on the second round, I believe. If we weren't up to date on the Sandy Transit Tax and it was kind of a vetting mechanism and stuff. And we had a ton of ton of applicants the first time and we had to develop a process. You know, one thing that was noted though was is we are, and I get it, but we are really in unprecedented times right now. And especially with Congress passing some additional funding. Maybe just let's maybe review that because it's where they're already behind on. Their payments, you know, they'd already not paid the Sandy Transit, but now they're even more behind on a lot of payments. And when they're prioritizing that payment with, you know, paying whether it's a mortgage expense or to their leaseholder. And their taxes and different things and they're trying to prioritize. I just maybe some leniency, maybe showing a little bit of leniency towards that. Work with where work with where our business owners are sitting and how much they're struggling and trying to take care of their. Of their employees. So I get it. I get and thank you everybody for your service, but I did want to, I wanted to report that back that there is some of the frustration there. We did hear earlier on the police fee. I don't know if Chief Roberts is still on to kind of provide us an update or if maybe it's Jordan on. Where we're at with the hiring of those officers. One thing I would like to say going into our goal setting is with the increase in homelessness. For a variety of different factors and things. You know, I would, and I know things are tight right now in our community. We just talked about that with wastewater. But I would like to in our next budget cycle, hear from our chief and from our police department on what it, what is it going to take? Resource wise, if we have lack of resources, let's be honest about that and let's identify those and ask council for those. But if you could just provide me with, I want to give that direction. As we look ahead in this next budget cycle. I want to know what the best darn police department would look like and then we'll back up from there. But I want to know if you had a magic wand to address our sandy problems and growing homelessness and all the demands on your department. I'm going to want to know in our budget cycle what that looks like. But with that, can you give us an update on your hiring, on the hiring process and stuff right now?
Yeah, I'll start then Chief, I'm sure can fill in the gaps on the specifics, but. It was a great question and it's a nice reminder that we need to continue to share updates on where the fee is going. It was just a reminder, the fee, you know, resolution when it passed, it's directly for police department. So it gets, goes directly into the police budget. It can only be spent on the police department services. And in particular, it was for hiring two new officers and then recreating that lieutenant position, which then created the opportunity to hire up a couple more. Or promote up a couple sergeants to round out the force. And so we did hire two officers. And I think, you know, some of this is took a while to recruit. Counselors were involved in that recruitment, but we did find some two great officers and then the time it takes to go to the academy. Because they weren't laterals, they need to go to the academy. So they were away for several months. And so that, you know, again, we have, we don't see that increase in the force. They're back, they pass the flying colors. They, I think they're finishing up their. Field training and then they'll be out there policing as part of our force, which is great. We also are going through other recruitments and that's because of retire, a retirement and the potential for. More. Attrition or positions being vacated. So we're creating another list so that we can hire up pretty fast. When those, when those occur, but we did have another retirement that we're filling right now. So. The public safety dollars are at work with new officers. It just, there is a lag. And just one of the, you know, it's great that we go through all this training. Trust me, it's wonderful and our department does a great job. With, you know, getting into academy and doing the field training and everything, but. From the time from when the fee was passed to now, it does take time to get those new officers out on the street. Chief, do you want to add anything to that? Did I get that right?
Yeah, you did a great job on that. I was just gonna just mirror that. It takes about 14 months or. Right around there from the time you actually make an offer for someone, finish the background investigation and get all that taken care of. And then there's the academy time. It's about 14 months before they're actually on the road by themselves, give or take. And our two officers that we did hire for the public safety fee. They're just about ready to be released on their own, which is great news. They're doing very well. Officers Ling and Officer Boys are set to begin patrol duties on their own in January if everything goes well. And right now it's going really well. So we did have the retirement in March that was a little bit unexpected, but. So trying to fill that position and then another officer that is set to leave. Here pretty soon. So that's the reason for the hiring list. So it seems like. The minute we catch up, then we're, we're falling behind again, but we. We obviously try to stay ahead of the curve in the hiring process. That's why we're creating that list. So I do have, and I think I put this in the council report that I do have two offer letters out to folks already. To fill those positions and the background process has already been started. So. We're trying to stay ahead of about the best we can and it just takes a little longer to get those folks. Out there on the street. It's just, it's a little bit different than say, a lot of different. You know, jobs, whether in the city or in the private sector, it takes a little longer to get those folks. Up to speed and on their own. Like I said, about 14 months on average, give or take a little bit.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Exner.
I know Chief, we've had this conversation before, but just to put it out on the public airwaves, I guess. I've had several folks tell to me and I, I think I have a biasness here too that. Of the great selections we've made so far, we've yet to put a female officer on the force. And for all the kinds of reasons that it would make some sense to do that. I think it's really important that we, we look to finding a way to put that on there. And I know. The difficulties of just finding some of the officers to begin with, but putting a female officer on our. Forces, I think really an important piece of what we need to do as the, as. As the mayor was saying, the perfect police force would have some of those kinds of female representations there. I know you've been working on that to some degree, but obviously hasn't happened.
Yeah, if I can just comment to that, Counselor Exner, that's a very good point that you bring up. So. We. We recruit through the national testing process. And as the female officers apply, we, we test them the same as we do everybody else, of course. I am interviewing two on January 4th that are both females. So. You know, I'm very hopeful that there are obvious. Pluses to having a, you know, a female officer on too. Of course, we take them as they apply. So, you know, and hopefully that those two that are interviewing will do well. I'm very optimistic. So we'll see how that turns out. But also I would like to just say to, I don't know if Mr., I believe it was Decker. If he's still on, I'm not sure, but I wanted to comment before, but I didn't want to interrupt the flow of the council meeting. The. The process for those folks takes, you know, quite a while, but. The, what we have to do when we have folks that leave or. Or folks that retire, then those specialty positions, they have to go away for the time being. The reason is, is we have to fill the patrol slots first, of course. We have to have 24 hour coverage on patrol. That's first and foremost. After that, then a special, especially positions such as the traffic officer coming to play. Now that will be reinstated once we get back to full staff. So and that's what we're doing now. So I just wanted to let Mr. Deck know that. That that will be coming back, that position of course, but because of those folks. Leaving and the openings that we had, that didn't really have anything to do with the two that we hired for the public safety fee. Then that will be reinstated and working as quickly as we can to bring that back. No one's more excited to get the back of the full staff than I am.
Thank you. All right, oh, Counselor Smallwood.
And I also just address Counselor Exner's statement there. One thing I do want to, I want to be careful being the only female firefighter in Sandy and the first one hired. My two cents on this is that. First of all, you have a much lower percentage of women applying for jobs in public safety for obvious reasons. They're physically demanding, they're non-traditional. You know, a lot of women don't want to put themselves in harm's way if they have children, if they're thinking about starting a family, once they have a family, there's, there's a lot of things that go into that. And so I don't ever want us to put ourselves in a situation and I know that Chief would never do this, but where we're ever lowering a standard. To get a particular person hired into a job because all that does is weaken the entire career field. So. And in saying that, it's not, I'm not saying that there's not lots of women out there that are more than capable. There are. But we just want to make sure that our, our testing process and I having been involved in several of the interview processes with Sandy PD. Is equal for everybody regardless of gender, sex, sexual orientation, color of skin, or whatever it may be. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Smallwood. All right. So move forward with my report. I'm going to obviously, I'm going to bring up COVID and kind of all the attention that's, that's happened on that issue. It was about two weeks ago, I think, Counselor Smallwood, I told you about the meeting and then I know you were on duty for that. I think it was about two weeks ago that I had gotten a. A message from a private business owner asking me to go to her restaurant and meet with her. I showed up to the meeting and I found a large portion of our main street business owners. Sitting in that, in that restaurant. And it was brought to my attention that those business owners were ready to open up for business. As early as Sunday, that Sunday. So not this Sunday, but the, the previous Sunday. In that meeting, you know, I had brought up our previous conversations that we've had as a council. About our city role and our police role and our, our Sandy business license role. And then of course, as we all know. More importantly than that, what we, what we don't control, which is obviously we don't control the Oregon. Liquor Control Commission. We don't control the Oregon Lottery Commission. We don't control OSHA. Yet they were still very insistent on wanting to find a solution and wanting to open. From that conversation, you know, it was talked about really the only way that would provide them any kind of cover from. The governor coming down heavily on them would be a mass opening, a movement. Statewide movement, maybe larger than a statewide movement. They told me that there was another meeting going on in Gresham. Later that evening and they asked me to attend that. They also said there was going to be a meeting on Sunday in Tigard and they asked me to attend that. I said, I attended both of those meetings. And the meetings were very similar to that first one, which consisted of business owners with desperation in their eyes, anger. Wanting to know why people can go to the mall and pack in there and support corporate America. But they can't come to their local main street, support their local small business owner. Wanted to know why they can turn on the TV and once the beavers and ducks play football and the Blazers play basketball, but they can't work out their local fitness center. And they wanted to know why, you know, they see children of politicians doing different things and get in certain things that they get to do. While their children are stuck in virtual learning. So I said, all right, I'll, I'll help you guys. I'll help you find a cover, find a movement. And as Counselor Smallwood mentioned, that meeting at Sandy grew into meetings and that included the main streets of Gresham, Troutdale, Fairview, Estacada, Malala. I am now hearing from business owners on the main streets of Madras, Kusby, Newburgh. The Dals, Dallas, Oregon, Lebanon, all over the state. All over the state of these business owners that have just come to a wit's end. They've had it. It's not that they can wait several months. It's that they can't wait weeks. In fact, the biggest pushback I've received from these business owners on the New Year's Day opening is that that might be too far into the future. That they may not be able to make it to that. So that has been something, an effort that I've been part of, that's gotten a lot of attention and talked about. I've put on a lot of my commentary provisions that I'm speaking on behalf of myself and not council. As we've talked about, I feel that's important. But as a leader in this community. If we don't have a main street, I'm not quite sure what I'm going to be mayor of. So I'm going to do whatever I can to help out these folks. It's my hometowns, community I grew up in. I've known a lot of these folks for over 20 years. So you better believe I'm going to do whatever I can to help them out and I'm going to continue to do whatever I can to help them out and I'm going to fight for these people. The M Hill County has recently passed a resolution or they're looking to pass a resolution that I passed on to David Dofman. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do that. It's more of a county. Kind of function and resolution. But I have continued to ask if there's ways in which we can try to find a way to give our local business owners cover. You know, if we even, even if it's ordering them to open. I understand, I hear people like Counselor Exner on the rule of law. Wanting to follow the law. I think it's important to note that we're not breaking any laws. These are mandates. And in fact, there's many that believe that they're unconstitutional mandates. And you know, we have, we find ourselves in a moment of time that was not of our choosing. And we have people that are facing extreme circumstances with their livelihoods and their everything they've worked their entire lives for on the line. They've got employees that are now trying to survive on less than $125 a week in an unemployment system that's not even giving them that. These are our neighbors and we have all ran for elected office to represent these people. And so that's what I intend to do. So with that, you know, I'm going to, at future meeting, we're going to, I'm going to continue with dialogue with both David and Jordan on trying to find things that we can do. As a city and if we can. And if we can find those things, we will be putting those in front of us as a council, in front of future councils as well. As mayor, I'm able to put items on the agenda and I will definitely look to be doing so. So on that, we will move on to counselor recognition. All right. So I got a little bit of time from Jeremy. You know, just like on the last thing I just talked about. There's a variety of things that we as counselors both agree and, and disagree on. I was a different person two years ago when I started this role as mayor. And, and I've changed a lot and I've grown a lot. I've learned a lot from the people on this council. And you've, quite frankly, you've, you've really made me believe again that things can be done. That people with differing opinions and backgrounds who disagree on a lot of things and agree on a lot of things can come together, put those things to the side, to put their community first and always put their community first and to accomplish things. And I just, for this council as a whole, before we get into the individual things, I mean, I, I just want to go over the last two years of some of the items that, the big items that we've accomplished. We have gotten ODOT to agree to a feasibility study to look into the vitality of a local bypass here in the city of Sandy. We received approval that's looking over the next several months to get synchronized traffic lights from ODOT on Highway 26, which has been a priority for many years. We secured funding for 362nd to Bell Street and have continued forward with that, those plans and, and looking to make that happen. It's really going to alleviate the school time commute and provide access to a future of this community that is just wonderful. We won county transportation funds for paved shoulders on 362nd. And then we took over control from ODOT on a vital piece of Highway 211. That's a very strategic and important stretch of road for this community, both for safety factors, growth factors and a variety of things. We control our destiny there now. We supported our Sandy Police Department. Right off the bat, we could put together a long-term and stable force, a source of funding, which is putting more officers on the street. We supported our local main street small businesses. We did two COVID-19 relief programs for those folks. We slashed red tape on system development charges, which is now going to allow more patio seating outside of many of our restaurants and bars that our citizens are going to get to enjoy for many years ahead. And we increased funding for our tenant improvement program, which is now like the La Happy's of the world and the Brady's Brats and Burgers. And I know I'm forgetting more, but a variety of businesses that are coming in and thriving and growing and making Sandy a better place to live. And then just tonight, we, we approved what I think is going to be something awesome that go with those patios for the outdoor seating that's really going to help out these local small business owners, not just now with what they're facing, but really, you know, the vitality and enjoyment that our neighbors have of this community into the future with those covers. And then our dirty problem, our, our wastewater issue. We, as a council, we took that, we took that straight on. And one of the biggest moments for me was in Salem when, you know, we as counselors, we, we sit on different chairs and we debate and we talk about from different sides, these different issues. But this, in our effort with our dealings with Salem, we, we all got onto the same side of the table. And we advocated together as a team for our, for our community. And the inroads that that has done for relationships in Salem and securing the money we did for the future of our wastewater project and how, what that's going to turn into, you know, when we do those tours and walk around the Sandy River and Roslin Lake and, and, and the opportunities that come from that, that's because of everybody on this, on the city council and the hard work that everybody put in. And I'm going to mention it again later on, but childcare and the leadership that Bethany and others showed on that and the dividends that that's going to play, not just now, but for years into the future. And your, the fingerprints that counselors are going to have on that is, is just amazing. So individually, Bethany, you know, so, so impressed with you. Just, you know, I remember we sat down that first time at Mountain Milk and talked and talked about some of the different issues and catching you up and then walk, watching you jump on to, jump on to council and you attended every single wastewater tour. No other counselor attended every single wastewater tour. And those aren't fun tours. But you, you, you found the time and you, you jumped in feet first into that process. You, the engagement with elected leaders and the relationship you built with Representative Anna Williams and others to bring attention to the issues that our city was facing in childcare and, and, and traffic concerns and others was, was just remarkable. And I saw you at a lot of events outside of Sandy City Council, just getting engaged in our community. And then it's been brought up several times now, but childcare and how you took on that initiative, something that we talked about the different skill sets that everybody has and that wasn't going to come forward if it wasn't for your leadership, Bethany. And we are a childcare desert and that's just getting harder and harder in a post-COVID world. And it's going to be something that you've done here in this community that for generations, you're going to touch people's lives and for the work that you've, that you did there. You are an important voice on this council for a variety of reasons, being a new person, newer to this community, part of a younger family, having kids in our schools, what you want to see in a community that you love. I just always really appreciated your input to our council. So thank you so much for these last two years. I've just, I've really appreciated the relationship that we've built. I wish that we got more done with that damn community campus. But I know that we were both in on that and I just really appreciated your work there and your, your help on the envisioning process there. All right, Jan. So your, your mentorship and leadership is something I've, I've truly learned a lot from. Your experience and how measured you are, how much of a steady voice you are, and the fact that you're, you're of a different political makeup and stripe as me. I know we're in our nonpartisan roles, but you know, I talked about believing again. You're a big reason for that, Jan. And just your ability to put differences aside and speak the truth and, and it put what's important front and center and put our community first and the knowledge and expertise that you brought. I know you disagree with me on a lot, that you were never, you were never disagreeable with me. And I, I really appreciate that. I really appreciate that a lot. And I hope that you stay involved in our community. And I hope that you continue on the budget committee or on planning or whatever damn role you want. I just, I want you to be part of things here and into the future. And I'm sorry, everybody, I'm such a sad.
Absolutely agreed more than disagreed by far.
Thank you.
I love crying.
Yeah, I know. God, it's horrible. And then finally, John. You know, I, I knew you more than anyone else coming into this thing. And, you know, I always talk about how he beat me for city council for that, for that appointment. And the truth is, is thank God he did. He, he was ready for it and I was not. And what he's accomplished in his leadership on this council, he has a way of being a voice of reason that takes these complicated issues and puts them all together and is able to develop next steps in a very cohesive fashion that gives us direction. Jeremy always taught, said, you know, I want to know what John thinks. I know we all found our moments there where we, we, we all wanted to know where, where, what John thought. And I, I don't know if I've been frozen or not. Have I been frozen or, okay, that, that, it got weird there for a second. And just as a public servant, what you brought to the meetings from a knowledge standpoint, the lights are fantastic, what you do in this community. And then the city manager stuff, you know, you mentioned that, I think you, I know you're proud of it. We're proud of it. We're proud of it. The work that you did in the hiring process for Jordan and the review, you know, those are things that are, don't just stop. They don't just stop with Jordan in that hiring process. Those are the things and the tools that we're going to look to implement, you know, here forward. And, and the professionalism that you brought to us as a council and a staff and as an organization, it's just immense. And, and you're one of those, I know, that also, I mean, I know we all have agreed and disagreed, but we've had our differences of opinion. And I just want you to know, from me to you, that that has never changed how I felt about you and, and my, my level of respect for you is just tremendous. So, all right. So with that, hopefully I'm done crying and talking. You all three should have a gift that we work together with staff and ask you kindly not to open so that we could do our big reveal. Unmute yourselves though. I gotta hear the unwrapping of the presents and stuff. I mean, come on.
Stan, kind of funny, but we're over in Black Butte and we're celebrating Christmas with my wife's family. So we had all of our presents that we brought over here already. And we had no room in the vehicle and I was like, oh crap, I gotta bring. I thankfully didn't forget it.
All right.
And Jeff, thank you for dropping these by as well too. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
I got to play Sam a little bit too.
Come on, I'm dying over here.
What's going on?
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Uh-oh. Are we all frozen?
Bethany.
All right. And then one more.
I have a guess about what this is.
I don't know if there's a big check in the back of that.
Flash with cash right now.
I can confirm there is not a large check included in any of these.
Is absolutely beautiful.
Oh man, look at that.
Amazing.
Is that a picture of the sewer, wastewater treatment?
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And staff and everybody really worked hard to put those together for you. One project I didn't mention, obviously, was the viewpoint enhancements that we did together as a council and approved. And obviously that's an iconic spot here. So hopefully as those hang up on your, your walls, you'll, you'll remember that viewpoint, your, your time serving our community and maybe not remember some of the hardships. My, every vacation we went on as a family home from Disneyland, my dad always said, if you got kids to spend the last hour in a good mood, mom will totally forget about how bad it was. So hopefully you guys can remember, remember the good times with these and, and we'll look to close out. But thank you again to everybody, for every, just everybody on council and all of you counselors leaving and for your service to the community that I know we all love so much. So, thank you.
One thing I'd like to say, Stan, is, is this ought to be a standing ovation for everybody, although the three outgoing counselors, so.
That's what it looks like, right, John?
Pac 12 champs and they didn't know it until a few days before.
I love the two sides, the, in, in the chambers, in the Zoom council. We've been all over everything.
I tried to clip an image where everybody was smiling. It was.
Strong, hard work job to do.
That's right. All right. So with that, remember, because we're the, we're the 2018, 20 council, so it never ends. You got to stick around for an executive session after this. But with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody.